I do have 9:00 AM. I am going to call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if Brad Wilson would lead us today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, call for public comment. We will stay, still take phone-in calls about issues that are not on the agenda, and that is for reference only. The two phone numbers are 882-6248 and 882-6297, and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any on the agenda for other commissioners?
No.
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the April 13th, 2021 agenda. And there's one thing I would like to adjust, and that is to move item number 12 right after item number seven.
So move with the change.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Item number five, action to approve the Cottington County Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners joint meeting minutes of April 6th, 2021.
So move.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. That motion carries. Item number six, action to approve the April 6th and April 9th minutes of the Board of Cottington County Commissioners.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any additions or corrections on those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. That motion carries. Item number seven, presentation of the SDML 30-year participation plaque by Brad Wilson, the administrator of SDML WC Fund. If you want to come forward, and you are welcome.
Come on up and have a chair.
Just gives a stereo effect is all.
Green is good, right?
Yeah.
You want to introduce yourselves so they know who's talking.
Set that one off.
Yes, thank you for having me today. My name is Brad Wilson. I'm the administrator for the SDML Workers' Compensation Fund. We provide the work comp coverage to Cottington County and 500 other public entities in the state. And the reason for my visit today is that we're celebrating our 30-year anniversary. We've actually been celebrating it for four years. It's kind of like that birthday, your friend who celebrates their birthday all month long. Well, that's, uh, so it's going to take about five years, but with 500 members, it really takes that long to get around and present the plaques to, uh, to our members and show them our appreciation. A little bit of history, the SDML Work Comp Fund was formed in 1987 to provide work comp coverage to public entities, and we've been going strong ever since. So very first year, we had 56 members. Again, fast forward, we're now at 501. And I'm here today to present a plaque to Cottington County in appreciation for your 30-year anniversary in 1991. You've been a member of the SDML Work Comp Fund for 30 years. And behalf, on behalf of our Board of Trustees and the other 500 members, just like to say thank you and show our appreciation by presenting a plaque to the commission. Chair, Madam Chair, if I may present it to you.
All right.
Hold on, let me get a press service.
Yeah, go.
It's got to be on radio, so smile.
That's awesome. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Leave it to Commissioner Gable.
Thank you.
I don't have to tell you.
She probably can do my presentation. She's seen this many times, and she's worked the best for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Brad.
Appreciate it.
All right. Now, we will move on then to item number 12, action to provide a letter of support for the City of Watertown's request to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for a flood control feasibility study update. And we have Mayor Sarah Karen here, and Glenn, if you'd like to come up as well. And they will give us a little information about this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, folks.
Yes, I thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to make this presentation, and thank you commissioners for your time this morning. Flooding is an issue that we're all very familiar with, unfortunately, living in the area that we do. And I know you've all been concerned with it, experienced it, helped with it. This is a major concern for the City of Watertown, and we've been trying for years and years to have a flood control solution. So I just wanted to give a brief history of what's been going on. We had a flood control study in the 1980s, and then, of course, we had the devastating flood in 1997, which after study was determined not to even be a 100-year event, was somewhat less than that. A flood feasibility study had just been completed prior to that flood, and all the maps changed and everything as a result of new information from that flood. And we found out just how much at risk our community is. And then, since that time, we have experienced multiple floods, and we've all been on the front lines fighting it and trying to get some help to manage flood control in Watertown and in our whole county. So the Army Corps of Engineers has completed some studies, but they need to be updated. We cannot move forward with flood control without the participation of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they need funding from Congress in order to be authorized to move forward. So every year, the City of Watertown writes a letter to the Corps of Engineers saying, yes, we still want flood control, yes, we still want to move forward. Well, in 2015, the State of South Dakota partnered with the City of Watertown by giving us a SWARMs grant, that's the State Water Resource Management, grant to help us get that done, to pay for a little bit more of it than the feds were originally going to pick up. So we showed that, and they, they went forward a little bit and got some authorization, but since Congress has not reauthorized funding to complete the feasibility study, that's the very first step in flood control, is determining basically if it's cost-effective. Previous studies show that the benefits far outweigh the cost, but the numbers they used are old, they have to update that information, and they need to look at what the alternatives are, what has changed in our watershed. We need an update before we can move forward. So all that we're asking you to do is to support our effort to get that feasibility study done once and for all. And I'm hearing from the Corps of Engineers that there might be a possibility that we can get that done this year, more so than in previous years. There seems to be money available to do the study. This isn't money to build the dam, this isn't money to build any specific flood control feature, this is money to determine the feasibility of having a flood control project that will help our region. So I'm asking you to support the city by writing a letter to the Corps of Engineers stating that you support moving forward in completion of the feasibility study.
Glenn, did you want to add anything to that?
I think the mayor summed it up pretty well. It's not a matter of when we get a, or if we get a flood again, it's a matter of when. And I think we all realize that these are all of our constituents that we are talking about that are impacted by something like this, and we need to constantly keep our foot in the door with the Corps as far as this study. In the council for six years, and the mayor's right, every year, we have submitted that letter to the Corps, hopeful that maybe we're getting a little closer to the top of the list if there is funding there, but it does need to show that there is support from those of us here in the city as well as Cottington County.
All right. So I did have a support letter. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to read it over. Anyone would entertain the motion then to have me sign that letter of support?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Do we have any comments, questions for the mayor or anyone?
I'm sure, I did have a few questions. So, thanks for coming. And I guess, could you, I'm not familiar with the current study and, you know, how it's structured. Does it, when you say feasibility, so does it look at all the different options that are out there for flood control? And then, what are the criteria, or the general things they look at in terms of feasibility? Just?
Right. They, they will be looking at the cost-benefit analysis, that's probably the big part of it, to update those numbers, which previously, I think it was 1990s that they did the numbers that, where they finished it. They've started it a few times, but they haven't finished it. One thing that's different from 97 is we now have the ethanol plant, which is not in the floodplain itself, but the rail coming and going to the ethanol plant is inundated in a 100-year event. And so when we plan for that, when we put up the berms and those emergency measures, we always have the materials set to close the rail, and we haven't closed it. But if, when the water level reaches a certain point, we have to shut that rail down, and that affects the commerce coming in and out. They'll look at that in this feasibility study. What is the financial impact of closing these businesses down? What is the financial cost of taking people out of their homes and putting them up elsewhere? You know, every time we do these advanced measures, when we expect there could be a threat of flooding, it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. So recently, we've, we've had a couple of efforts since I've been mayor. In the first couple of years, we did have the threat of flooding, the National Guard was mobilized, and materials were purchased, and it's never cheap. It's, you know, upwards of a million dollars just to be ready for a flood. And they take all of that into consideration. What are the effects of not doing anything? We continue that year after year after year. Every time there's a threat of flooding, we mobilize advanced measures to minimize the damage. So that all goes into the equation to determine it. As far as which, which alternatives for flood control, they, they will, I'm sure, identify each of the different alternatives that have been around there, but that's been done before. They know they have to update it because there is a cost that's unique for each type of flood control measure.
Well, I guess the question I had would be, would they be looking at new options if they're there?
Yes, absolutely. If there's a new option.
Because, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of controversy about the dam, so that whole idea. So it's, I understand that needs to, everything needs to be updated because stuff has changed over the last 20 or so years.
Right. And they'll support, they'll support whatever is, has the best benefit-to-cost ratio. And so far, that, I mean, there has been the dam in the past, and when they've gone through that, there's a value engineering study that was completed in 2009, and I actually got to watch the Corps of Engineers do that over the course of a week. They brought in experts from all over, and yes, there is new technology, they're updating flood maps all the time. One of the things that people often ask me about is why don't we just build higher levees? And the, the value engineering study goes into why, if we use levees, there's always a chance that they leak, and FEMA doesn't really care for them a whole lot. FEMA is another branch of the federal government, the emergency management versus the Corps of Engineers. They're going to take all that into consideration when they update the feasibility study. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
The thing that, that I, we need to tread very, very lightly, be very, very careful. I represent that whole area that's affected. The lake, the lake is very, very important, as well as the watershed. I've been very, very pleased with what has been done in the watershed area with the Upper Sioux River Project and all the work that has been done by area farmers in that area. But, but I just caution the city, I just don't want to open up the paper tomorrow morning and see Mahoney Creek Dam is back on the map again, because I tell you what, that is not good. This has to be a community, if we're going to make anything happen, whether it's flood control or thing, anything else, we all have to work together, and we can't draw lands and lines in the sand or, or whatever. And, and I just hate to see our community get divided over something like this again. So I just caution you to be very, very careful. I'm not saying that another study is not good. I was at the meeting, the last meeting that we had, and I say we, I would say the City of Watertown and the, me, Sue Conifer, I was sat on that committee, and I was at the meeting the last time we met with the Corps of Engineers. And the last thing, we'd gone quite a ways and gotten quite a few things done, and the last thing they were going to do is report back to us with a cost, not a, a cost-benefit ratio, but a cost factor. What was it going to cost? We never heard back from them. So that kind of answers your question back, and those, and that was at least 10 years ago, when I was at that last meeting. And it was, it was just unbelievably costly then, and so be prepared.
Right. And, and I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner. I, I share your thoughts. I have met with some of the folks. It's very time-consuming, but I, you know, it's kind of fruitless to move forward until we've complete this step. And I think there were questions left unanswered. That's not right. We need to address every single concern. I was shocked, I had some members of the Lake Pelican Water Project District come tell me about their concerns just about a year and a half ago. The, the questions that they had were completely valid and need to be answered. And as a matter of fact, I, I took their concerns straight to the state geologist and the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, and they were concerned about groundwater and about rerouting the creek. We need to address each and every one of their concerns before we move forward. And I, I know the city, I can speak for the council, they, nobody wants to trample on anyone else. This is an issue that affects all of us. It doesn't just affect a single group, it affects our entire county and the region beyond. So we need to work together. Couldn't agree with you more.
Well, you know, it's, it can repeat itself, and I know Troy, what his concerns are and so on, but when I used to read the Louis Lemoine Westerns back in the day, they were always fighting about water. And they always said, they always have fought about water, and we always will fight about water, and that's just the way it is, you know?
It's time for all of us to get on the same page and find a resolution to this thing. So this is the first step. I'm glad to support it.
One more question. So on the, on the concerns that Commissioner Johnson was mentioning, so this, how does the study address, address that kind of thing, like the typical, does it, I guess, does it just come out as they run through each option? And do they look, I understand the cost-benefit, money's the big, the big issue a lot of times, but does, I guess, what, maybe the question I'm asking is what other criteria do they use besides just cost as they look at the different, you know, possible solutions?
Well, I can't tell you everything that they're going to do, but they have protocol. And I will tell you that, you're a military guy, you understand that, the, they have a process that they're going to follow, they're not going to leave any stone unturned, and they will investigate thoroughly. No flood control project designed by the Corps of Engineers has ever failed, and that's why they have to be involved. They, they know how to do it, they're the experts, they write the programs, and they, they know what works and what doesn't, and they won't embark on something that has harmful side effects that aren't addressed. They have to look at all of that. And so I do, I know people have differing opinions, I think, just from casual observation. I've been in their, watched them work, I know how careful they are, it's not casual at all. They're carefully examining every impact of every action they would take. They won't even move forward with a design until they're completely comfortable that any negative side effects are addressed. And that does cost money. Frankly, it's about money. The completion of those estimates has never been done. It wasn't that they turned away because the numbers they got were bad, they were not authorized to move forward. It seems like every time we get close, there's another hurricane and another densely populated area of the country that needs the funding more than we do. And I can't argue that our population center is small compared to some of the other priority areas along the coast where those funds have been sent instead of addressing our problems. But sooner or later, we need to be answered, and, and we have questions. We cannot move forward protecting ourselves without the participation of the Corps of Engineers, and this is how you get it. This is, this is what we have to do to get their attention.
Very good.
Well, I've been kind of involved in this for the last 12 years, and I'm not a big dam supporter. I've always been a small dam supporter, a little air in there, put up with the watershed and working with them. I think they've done a very good job. I think the city itself is lacking some. I, they don't, they haven't even cleaned out the creek. There are dead trees in there that ate the water from moving downstream. They've been in there for a couple of years already. We've got, the city owns land up north of town, city itself is not a good steward. They're not, I've had several complaints of thistles and things like that growing on the land.
I wish you would share those with me.
But it's all part of that, it was all purchased under that Mahoney Dam thing. I know it's about money. I would support this 100% if I thought it would reduce the number of people that would have to pay flood insurance in Watertown. Without that, I wouldn't support it.
Right. And I, and it would, that, I mean, this is...
But where is the assurance, Mayor?
FEMA won't change their maps because of anything the city does.
FEMA wants everybody to have flood insurance, including, not, not mentioned specifically, but they want everybody in the country to have flood insurance at a different rate. That would include the people in every dam.
Well, right. I, we don't have any control over that, and that's not what this is about.
We start another process, and that's where it goes. It opens, it overgoes there.
All right. Well, Troy, did you have any?
No, I don't think so. I'm glad that we're moving forward with this, and the City of Watertown has my support as a county commissioner on this. I think it's time that we look at moving forward with this. We've battled on this long enough, and if there's issues, bring them to the city's attention. They can't fix them unless they know about them. And I would encourage anybody out there that's listening, if you see a dead tree blocking the river, and it's the city's, call them and tell them, and let them have the opportunity to get it removed. But this today is about the feasibility study, and that's why we're here.
We ready to vote?
Have they given you any indication as to? I know, having worked with them the last time, there's a lot of things that are slow, but they're really, really slow. I mean, I mean, this feasibility study, just to request, just to get the requests answered could take five years.
Right.
You know, that's, that's what frustrates a lot of people, it just, it is slower, they're slower than slow. And have they indicated anything, you know? Would it have to be into the, the next year's budget as far as letting us know whether or not, they would even go ahead with the study?
Yes, I think so, and every year is another chance at the budget. That's why we're doing it.
That's why you have to wait just another year for another budget.
It just hasn't been authorized, and so they want to see support. I think this, I've, I've never asked you before to, to write a letter of support, but this year I am, because I, I'm hearing from them that there's maybe a possibility that we could actually get some funding.
Have you asked the Township Association if they would support?
No, I have not. I have asked the elected officials, and I've, I've gotten a letter from some, and I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from others. But I think that if we can show that, I think we all want to find a solution. And this isn't about arguing about which solution is better than any other, this is about getting authorization to move forward, and, and I think we need to move forward together. And you have my word that I will work with everyone, I, I will make it my priority, that we cannot do this as a single entity, we must do it together, and we're all affected by the negative, you know, when our hospital goes down in the county, it isn't just the people who live next to the river who are affected by it, it's everybody that needs to get to the hospital. And if, if one of our industries is shut down because of flooding, it isn't just the people that work at that plant, it's, the entire economy is affected by it. So we're all in this together, and I hope that we can work together as a team to try and find a solution.
Madam Chair, if I may. Myron, you asked a good question, I guess. What is the timeframe? We don't know, do we?
No, but it's an annual appropriation. I have to, I've argued.
So the feasibility study comes back next. What's the next step after the feasibility study comes back?
Okay, so I did bring, 2015 is when we, we got the SWARMs grant to do this, so I brought this plan, and the timeline for it, I'm going to pick through here, but it seems to me it was about a year and a half, if they start, until they finish.
Okay. And I'd be amazed at that.
That's on the study.
That's only the feasibility study.
And that'd be putting it on fast forward.
Okay.
But we just need to keep our foot in the door constantly on this. When that does, does come up, that they will look at this.
We can't give up trying. I know, it's, it's a, it's a wound in our county community, that I'm not, I'm not trying to picket that, but we are all in this together, and we can't just look the other way and hope it goes away. We flood periodically, like Glenn said, it's not a matter of if we ever have another flood, it's when.
Right. And I think the important thing is, is just us all working together, you know?
Communication.
Yep. Keep, keep that line of communication open, and that everything is looked at, and those concerns are addressed, and I think we'll have a better outcome if we just kind of go down that path, so.
Just, if I can make a comment, the, I guess the way I'm looking at this is, you know, we, this is an opportunity to, well, hopefully an opportunity to update the information we have. I mean, information is, is what we need, is about the, the real state of things. I'm not excited about some of the solutions that might, I'm probably not going to be very excited about some of the recommendations, but on the other hand, I'd rather have the information and understand, you know, all those hydrologic and all those kinds of factors and, and see some updated analysis. So, you know, that's kind of how I'm looking at it right now.
We don't know till we know, so got to take the first step and see where that leads us, and then go from there and come up with the best solution for all. All right. Are we ready to vote? I think I'll do a roll call.
Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Van Duzen.
Aye.
Anton.
Aye.
Five in favor.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming. Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
Thanks for the information.
I think it makes excitement to it.
All right. Then we will move on to monthly reports and we will start with the auditor.
We are in the process of getting the 2022 budget worksheet sent out to the department heads and hopefully they will return those to me by the 21st of May. We need to get started on the 2022 budget. It is the end of the first quarter of 2021 already. We do have Board of Equalization today, so my office will be busy sending out notifications for anybody who's affected by any actions you would take at these meetings today. And then we will be assisting the city of Watertown and the Watertown School District with the preparation of their ballot for the combined election to be held June 15th. The deadline to file is May 7th, so we won't be preparing any, any ballots before that time. That's about it.
Two school board positions of opening up this mission.
I saw that.
All right. Any other questions for Cindy? Hearing none, let's move on to the Director of Equalization with Shawna.
Morning Shawna.
Morning Shawna.
What's up? Yeah, you can show me.
Okay, so today we're holding our county boards and our consolidated boards. This afternoon, we don't really have any appeals, but we will be going through all of our assessment programs and acting on those. And then tonight we have a total of eight appeals, five different appellants. And then after thankfully that is done, we are, the appraisers are ready to start back up with their reappraisal this summer. They are going to start in Lake in Rawville and end up in Richland. So hopefully we can make it through those areas. We thought we'd get started earlier rather than later because of the weather, but then when it's muddy, we can't really. So hopefully we'll be making it out soon within the next couple of weeks. Hopefully they'll start that. And we've been working with Ultra and First District. I know I've mentioned that we are getting a new soil survey. Last year, everyone is finally got their stuff done so that we can get it into the computer system. Ultra, basically First District and Ultra are working together. We're going to put it all in, transfer everything, and then we're just going to go through and double check it and basically start looking at what it's going to do. I'm hoping it doesn't change much, but we'll, we'll see. We'll see and we'll know more once we start looking at it. So that's what we're going to be doing.
Over to Lake, Rawville and?
Richland.
Richland, okay.
Question Shawna about tonight for the consolidated board. So we'll be able to adjourn, like we don't have to keep it open for a time?
Yep, unless you guys, unless something comes up where you guys need to take, I know table one or whatever, then we will need to meet again. But everything I have scheduled is just for tonight. Because we only have, like I said, eight total right now. So there's no need for two days, but if something comes up, then it depends on what happens.
6:30 tonight.
6:30 tonight at City Hall.
About 1 o'clock today too.
1 o'clock this afternoon, yep.
For local.
For county.
Yep. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you Shawna.
On the, on the soil update, when they update the, is it, I guess, it seems to me, we don't update everything at once when you do that, all the assessments at once based on the soil survey?
We will, yes. Because all a land is assessed based on productivity, which is based on the soils. So they have added a few Z name soils is what they say, so not every single parcel is going to change hopefully, but there could be a lot. We're not really going to know, but yes, everything. We're implementing an all new soil survey.
Okay, so it's across the board?
Across the board, yep.
Thank goodness for software, right?
Right. We still have to go in and double check each one individually, which is good to do anyway.
Right.
And maybe we'll catch some things and we'll be able to, you know, see when you look at each one, it's just a lot nicer and hopefully it goes smoothly, but it'll probably be a whole summer project, so.
Sure. Any other questions for Shawna? No, thank you very much. See you at 1. All right, now we will move on to the Welfare Director Report with Sarah. Good morning.
Morning Sarah.
Okay. First I have the charts that with our service. Thank you to Leah again for the user friendly format.
Leah created a graph?
Great, Leah created a graph.
Imagine that.
Yep, thank you.
So this just lays out kind of our, what our services that we've delivered. You can see our unique individuals. March, we saw 52 people come through our office and then set with 70 visits. And then the blue smaller graphs are the different types of services. We're working on another, a different graph that's going to be a little bit more, lay it out a little bit better because this is a little deceiving. We helped 45 individuals with housing and it looks comparable to burial, which we helped with three burials last month. So you can just see some of that.
You have to focus on the numbers at the top of the columns in this kind of format, so.
I'm also working on adjusting some of the information we're gathering, like who's, who we're getting referrals from so we can get a better picture of what's actually going in our, on in our office. The other piece that I'm trying to get a better picture of is who, why people are coming in our office with ICAP being there and CARES, people are coming into the office for different things. And so I want to make sure I'm getting, getting an accurate picture, capturing all of that information and data. So any questions about that piece of it? And where's the goal? Or to the?
So housing is hot and heavy.
Yeah, continues with the CARES, which is the next piece. Most of those have been CARES. Carrie has done 40 applications with CARES in March. Reimbursed 49, oh, our office was reimbursed $4,900 for the hours that she put in for that. And so again, she gets $50 an hour with that. There's going to be an amended contract coming because with the new stimulus, we're going to be, their housing is going to be getting some additional funds. And so that will be an amended contract coming, extending the date. It's, we believe it's going to go out through December with some additional funds coming with the new stimulus.
And that's just rental. That's not anything to do with mortgages, correct?
The new one is going to be mortgages. So the initial one was rent or mortgages. The second one was all rent. And the third one is going to be all mortgages.
Oh, okay. So they're putting that back in.
Sure, I need to make a correction since I, I've labeled that, that the table there that has the costs.
Yeah.
That, I think that's the last 13 months, not year to date.
Yeah, we have not spent that on.
Thank you. I was looking at that.
I would too with that. My budget is gone. Yeah, no, that's, so funerals have been higher in the last.
Thank you Troy.
Yeah, clarifying that, yeah, thank you.
Whoa, I didn't expect that much.
No, 13 months. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So just as an example of kind of the direct impact that CARES is having on our community, one landlord who's been fantastic to work with has received $34,000, almost $34,000 in rent, which goes to show the impact that CARES is having and also how much landlords have been losing by people not being able to pay. So it's been a really wonderful program for our county. A breakdown of the applications that have come through, we've had 80 total through Cottington County. 49 were approved, 20 were denied and 11 are in process for a total amount of $127,387.66. So over $120,000 have come into Cottington County through CARES with that, so, yeah. Then moving on, the ICAP connection, just wanted to mention that again, it's been really good. Amy hasn't been getting the full amount of hours that we're contracted with, but the office coverage and just the transition of services have been wonderful. As I mentioned, one of the things we're trying to work on is like making sure we're identifying correctly who's coming in our door. And the other piece of that is how those services are working. And so you'll see attached is a flow chart. That's my attempt to try to break things down in our office. One of the big pieces of that is differentiating between just casework and case management because people may come in our office, we identify a need, we help them, they're able to access whatever resources we need and they move on. And it's really a short-term intervention where case management is more of that level that we've talked about with ICAP. And so we're working to differentiate what we just assist with as they walk through our doors and what we need to refer to Amy for that. And so that's what that flow chart breaks down of how that process works and, and where the difference.
And part of it, Amy, she's just been really busy with transitional housing again, so that's kind of where her time has been focusing, keeping her.
She, she's been really busy with the drug court pieces, brothers and sisters behind bars and helping people that are coming out of jail. So it's a really valuable piece that still really benefits the county, working on getting people housing.
So is that one of the things, so the contract we have with ICAP, it'd be nice to get some of that data too. We, I mean, we could put the two reports together because that, I think that's going to be, I mean, so people understand this is something that's meant to reduce the jail population over time, that piece of it. I mean, so.
And it is, it is working and happening. So, yeah, it would be maybe.
Yeah, and that's part of the reason I wanted to, I'm adding that why are people coming through our office and, and for Amy to be able to identify if she's working with them under ICAP or under the county so that we can get a better picture. Most of them that she works with under ICAP are the transitional housing. And so we can get a better picture of that.
Yep.
And transitional housing means coming out basically, so people understand what we're talking about, it's coming out of the jail and, and now they have to do something.
Yeah, right.
Get themselves situated.
Yep, right. And it's pretty in-depth. I mean, it's, it's helping with the temporary housing. Midwest Bible has been a great connection with that. The Old Grant School is also another connection that we're using for that transitional housing. There's still definitely some needs in our community and so she helps get them there and then moving them onto permanent housing. Part of that is getting a job and just setting down roots and really helping move forward with that.
I think that's working very well.
Yeah, there's times, those individuals before we had this in place, sometimes they'll go out and commit another crime because they didn't know how to navigate that system and be able to do that on their own. So that was easier for them to get back into the system again and they'd be taken care of. So there are a lot of pieces to that puzzle that getting their, whatever through their, what am I trying to say? Transit, you know, transportation, that's another big thing for those individuals, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's really making sure all those pieces are connected so that we can avoid the recidivism.
Yep.
This chart here is really helpful.
Good.
Good job.
Thanks. We have tried, like gone through several individuals that have come through, making sure we're getting them to the right place and that it's looking accurate. It's been helpful for our office too. I guess it's a short ways thing. So hopefully we'll have a better process on that. So then the other things I'm working on is updating the website. That's kind of what I've been trying to focus on this week, getting our website updated so that we can have links to other resources as well as accurate information from our, for our office. And so I've been working with Karen for that and I need to have another meeting because it's not all working how I, I need it to, so, but we're working on that. We're doing weekly staffings and then I'm also in talks with Betsy at 211 regarding a computer software program that would be secure and easier to track. That's been part of my struggle is we're using an Excel file to track everybody that comes in and then we transition that to another Excel file to get the graphs and everything. So it works, but it's not as secure as I would like it to be. And I also have concerns that we're not capturing everyone that comes into our office with that. And so, so there have been some discussions, which has been an interesting piece throughout the state too, because one of the things she recommended is we reach out to other counties. And because if she was going to develop something for us, it would make sense to develop, to develop it across the state. We've had a few meetings from that and where we're at right now is that there's going to be four counties that she's going to start conversations with to see the feasibility of it and how it would look. The software that they would use is the same software they're using for the CARES Act. So our office is already familiar with that soft, software. They would just develop it for county needs. The counties right now that are interested in having those conversations are us, Brookings, Beeteau County, and then Pennington, although Pennington might need their, they're much bigger. They might need their home. But so that's kind of where we're going to start conversations.
So what's the name of the software again?
Vision Link.
So this is what we're talking about at the Systems of Care?
Yes, so that's the other piece of it, which is also on the report. We had the meeting last week with our community agencies and there's a potential for Watertown, the, this, our community, our area community to bring all of our social service agencies together and also use a program through 211, which would be Vision Link, the same system, just developed differently for our community. And so Betsy's been really wonderful and just working with us on getting all of these pieces in place.
Yeah, I don't want to get ahead of what you were going to say, but I just thought that was a really helpful thing to have come up. And so basically it's Minnehaha County in that area doing, doing what we've been talking about is the systems of care. So the idea is that everybody, you know, all these different agencies that are involved in, in this kind of work of helping people that they'd be able to work out a system of waivers and memorandums of agreement that, so everybody would have access to say somebody's file, it's up so you can tell, you know, well, you tried this, maybe try that.
Yeah. And there are ways that, you know, Minnehaha has worked it, that they necessarily have to change, all of them had to change their software. There's ways they can still interlink. They found ways to do that.
A lot of players.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that, just for reference, that's number six on my, my report. And it is very exciting. I have to say I walked out of that meeting with my head spinning and it took me a few hours to get some thoughts together. So where I'm at now is putting a steering committee together with some of the partner agencies that would be willing to sit down together. And so it's exciting and I think there's going to be some good buy-in, but that's where I really need us to make sure we're following the process as we need to, that we're not skipping steps and that we're really addressing any of the barriers or concerns coming in, so.
Even though we know the end result in Minnehaha, we still got to go, start from the beginning so that it's right for us.
Right, because Watertown's very different than Sioux Falls. I mean, we just have a really different community. We're a different size and different agencies. And so I want to make sure that we're addressing it appropriately with that. So, yeah, so just talking about that piece then, we're working on that. And I've developed a resource directory and some other things to make things easier for our community. Going back to number five is the welfare services in particular. I did have a meeting with the funeral directors, which went very well, just to reconnect and build some of those relationships and I addressed some of their concerns and needs. And so hopefully that relationship will be good and they'll, they're contacting us and just really open communication with that. I did go down to Minnehaha County and spent the day with them, learning, which was very good, another head spinning day coming away because they have so many more services as they should. But just, we're doing some really good things here. I think that was one of the things I came away with, we're, we're really on a good track here in Cottington County and I think there's some things that we can build on too. So it's exciting. I have been working with the jail to address some of that recidivism piece and make sure that we're catching people to come through. I mentioned last time and, and it has been implemented, we've added two trigger questions to their intake process. One of those is, are you able to provide food for yourself or your family and do you have a safe place to go when you leave here? And so we've gotten a few people that come through answering no. And the process that we've developed for that is then we reach out to the nurse over there and have her do a further assessment with them. And if, if there are needs, then myself or Amy connect with, will connect with the inmate and do that.
Excellent.
The, the other piece of that is, this is, this form is based off of Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars used to have a form that they did with all inmates. This is more of an as needed form, but it's just an intake form or like an assessment form, I'm sorry. That we give to inmates that may, that they identified that may have needs or if they reach out for something. And so this is just a nice way for us to get a snapshot of if there are any needs or concerns. And so if they answer no to either of those questions, the first thing Gina over at the jail will do is give them this and have them fill this out. But it's not just for people that answer no. Sometimes people are in there for a while. So if it looks like they're getting close to release and there's some needs, then we would have them do this as well. So it's just another way for us to assess needs and make sure that we're catching needs before they're released from jail.
Has this been, has this been tested, been used? Is there any pushback from the?
No, actually. So this was Matt's idea at the jail. He thought it would be a good way of catching some of those things. And so because Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars did a similar form, it's, they're kind of used to it. And it's, so no pushback so far. It's new, so we haven't had a lot of use, but hopefully it will grow. Yeah, no, they're, they've been very good.
Well, and the thing is, is that they know what questions to ask because they deal with this every day.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a great form.
Yeah. So we've kind of combined their expertise and our expertise and are working to address all of that. And then we're also just looking at how we can address the needs in our community. One of the issues that, just an example of an issue is we had a gentleman come in last week with some really severe medical issues going on, unable to, or no income at this time because he's unable to work due to the medical needs. One of the things we identified is he doesn't have a valid ID. If he had a valid ID, he could apply for the stimulus. He could do his tax return, get the stimulus. He could be eligible for some other programs and stuff. And so the question is, is it to the county's benefits to pay the $27 to get an ID so that it makes him eligible for a whole bunch of other things? Those might be some different ways that county funds would be used, but it would be a cost saving in the long run. So simple things like that, that we could potentially adapt and not have to have, worry about homelessness instead. So those kinds of things. Also, just yesterday, we had three families come through or contact our agents or our office that was potential homelessness. All of them have young children. So it was just this, like, in our face of this still exists, it's still in our county. I have a meeting set up with Brothers and Sisters Behind Bars this afternoon to talk about some possible transitional housing options for families and some things that we could potentially look into. So I'm sure I'll be bringing more of that too, but that's just where we're at right now. So. I also, just to throw, just because things were not wild enough, we got our first deposition from Avera requested, which I knew was going to come because I'm new. And so we have our first deposition scheduled with them a month from today. So the day I'm supposed to give my report is also the day we're supposed to have our next community meeting or interagency meeting. So I'll have to reschedule that. And so just a heads up that.
Don't say anything more than what they ask you.
Yes. So I will be reaching out to Sioux Falls for sure to be asking them their advice.
On that, yeah.
Yes.
Your office is no doubt very busy. And we appreciate everything that you've done here. This is great. Good information.
I am really enjoying the opportunity to do all the things. So thank you for giving me the opportunity and allowing me to do these things. The last thing, just a quick highlight, like, again, I just want to kind of give the face to the name, is the client highlight. And this is a, a quick one. This referral actually came to us from multiple sources. I had been contacted by somebody at the hospital. Carrie was contacted by somebody at the school district and actually Amy was contacted by Head Start. All of them identified a need for an at-risk family. They were staying at a hotel. There were a lot of issues, a lot of concerns. We were able to connect with other agencies in the community, including Department of Social Services and Child Protection, do some problem solving. And then Amy was eventually able to assist the family through their, the emergency shelter grant, which is an ICAP program. And they now are in an apartment and working on getting things. So just all of the ways our offices working together and working with that. But it's making a difference to families in our community.
The importance of all the agencies.
Yeah.
Working together, that's the big thing is. And the systems of care is going to be, yeah, I'm excited for that.
Yeah, it'll be really helpful to be able to have a good communication method for everyone.
Yes.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any more? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right. We will move on to item number nine, action to approve auditor's account with treasurer and registered deeds fees collected in March.
The registered deeds fees collected in the month of March were $44,589.25. The remainder of that report shows you the auditor's cash and cash items as of the last business day of March. Second page also shows you where our cash fund balances are.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Waterman. Any comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose that motion carries. Item number 10, opening of bids and action to award a bid for the bridge rehabilitation project on 15 to 40, 155.
Morning, Rick.
That would be Rick.
Morning.
Good morning.
This is Mark Yuster with Banner Associates.
Good morning, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
Good morning. I've been here before, Alex.
Yes.
We don't have bid tabs. Let's get some of that.
You need a ladder opener?
I got one.
You got one. You got a good one.
We have four bids.
I gotta save some for me.
You need two bid sheets, there's four bids. I don't know how many more.
I got an extra.
You need two.
There should be more here. Here's the one that put it together.
Okay. Bridge rehab project?
Yes, this is on County Road 75, East Powell. Just a little.
Mark, you have one of these. So do you want to?
Yeah.
Okay.
First bid here is from Donnie Corporation.
Now, where do they claim their home office of that? Where are they located? That's what I was going to say. Are you, you consider Watertown as your home headquarters now?
A home headquarters, so I have an office here.
Okay, alright.
And then you have a bid bond included. And the total, 276,000, $274.50. Two seventy-six, two seventy-four, fifty. Second bid here is from Cran construction. Pre R A H M. They're on a slate in Minnesota. You have a bid bond included. Total bid amount, 251,000, $185. One, one eighty-five. And third bid here from Swinging Construction out of Grand Works, North Dakota. You have a bid bond.
We just spell that name?
S W I N G E N.
Thank you.
And a bid amount, 295,000, $691. Ninety-five, six, nine, one.
Somebody has an extra.
Here, you can.
I knew I had extras, but I didn't know where. Last bid here is from A G E Corporation out of Fort Pierre. If you have a bid bond included. 309,000, $302. And it's 309, 302.
So do you need time to go through these?
Yeah, I can tabulate the bid result.
Make sure they're apples to apples.
Okay, so then will we get that yet today or are we, how do you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll have that ready for you next.
Next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Put that on the agenda then to award that bid to the individuals that meet all the criteria.
Thank you.
All right then. Thank you. And yeah, thanks for the folks that came. We will move on then to item number 11, action to approve a project to repair the courthouse roof. And that would be Steve, our facility manager. Good morning, Steve. We do have a proposal in here.
There should be something in your packets, I believe. Here a little bit earlier back in March, we had a little bit of leak going on. So I had Protech Roofing come in and take a look at some spots up in the roof. And they had seen spots that's in the corners that are cracking and letting go. They had turned around and said, we do repair with not exceeding $2,500 worth of repair on the roof. This is an item that I will have to probably put on the budget next year. It's been 20 years since the roof has been re-roofed up there. So looked in histories and he had looked yesterday and stuff.
Isn't that about the life of a roof?
Yeah, they'll guarantee 15 years is guaranteed on a roof, so.
So this is a Band-Aid. I'm telling you, get it done.
Yes. Yep, this is a Band-Aid. We do have a few leaks going on.
Make a motion to approve this. Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Any other comments, questions?
Is the 2,500 in your budget?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Item number 13, discussion, possible action to pass a resolution to enact a ban on open burning. And Jamie is here, if you'd want to come up, give us some information so we can decide what.
I know what you're going to say.
Yeah.
Well, if you follow the National Weather Service on the Grassland Fire Index, we are in the good. Every, five o'clock every morning, this updates with 48-hour forecasts on the grassland fire indexes. We're still staying in that lower categories of moderate. Officially last night on the weather service, about five to seven central time, three tenths of an inch is what they recorded yesterday's moisture.
I'd still caution these people with the wind.
There's, there's probability.
I know. I told Brenda, I said, this was ridiculous that we met Tuesday to take the burn band off because nobody was going to burn. Well, the next night, there was somebody burned.
I did notice something.
So I, I drove up there to see where it was, but it was not in Cottington County. It was beyond Cottington County. So there was one east of town that was burning. There, and it was, I think they burned tires. It was black. It was really black.
For record, you can't do that.
Several of them live in north across County.
Yeah, they're right across. It wasn't, it was across, it wasn't in our county. It was across.
Fire.
But the fact is, the burn band is off, but when you got flames 20, 30 feet in the air, there's going to be some flying around something.
And there's, the winds are still in that, we're in that minimal category of pre-drought.
We are starting.
Steven, what the two inches of rain?
We are starting to green up though, so that should help.
We get the humidity levels up there, but we seem to have a wind factor in this part of the woods.
Yeah, plenty goes through here, that's for sure.
It's also amazing how fast that two or three inches of moisture.
It will. Yep. And we'll monitor that with the state climatology office out of West River out there, that Darren Clavel. I follow that pretty hard. He releases that drought monitor index. Actually, he's been giving us weekly briefings and everything. I think he makes up a big factor with the National Weather Service criteria. So.
You know, I don't, I think it was when we were getting two and a half, three inches, there's a line from Eureka down to Holton and west of there. And it was just about, you know, Mowbridge got eight humps, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there were some parts that did.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few brands still on in that. Corson, solder, Walworth areas. So, but right now we should be in the good.
All right. Yeah. We'll just leave it on the agenda till we get this updated and then we probably won't have to be doing this anymore. So.
Thank you.
Necessarily. All right. Thank you. Item number 14, action, possible discussion on COVID-19 practicing procedures, policy. I don't think we have anything.
Get your shots. Get your vaccinated.
Item number.
I was kind of embarrassed for the county and for the hospital and everybody as well when we had 1,400 vaccine shots available and only 400 people showed up. I mean, that's, come on, people. If you don't do it for yourself, do it for me. Notice I don't have a mask on today. I've had both my shots and I'm about a month out from the second shot. And I don't want to pick it up from somebody else. So get your, get vaccinated. That's my food for thought today. Thank you.
Item number 15. Were you going to say something, Troy?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that there's a walk-in vaccination event tomorrow.
Yeah. And the hours are from 6:30 to 1:00 tomorrow. It is cut down. The hours are shortened.
Are they doing the walk-ins from 9:30 to 1:00? 6:30 to 1:00, okay.
Got it. So at the extension center still?
Yes. Yep, it is Wednesday this week.
So they're taking these doses out of the freezer as they meet them? So many, our see folks are pretty likely sample that whole situation. They bring all the tools.
Which I was out there at the last vaccine event that took place last week and spoke with Joanne Paulson out there. Very appreciative of the county and the city working together to host that. She says the facility's been working very well and was very complimentary of the procedures and everything that are in place. So good job.
Yep. It is a streamlined process, so it does not take very long for individuals.
So 20 minutes.
And 15 of that is to wait after. All right. Item number 15, action to approve claims for payment. What do you have, Sabine?
We have just over 1,078,000 in claims this month of that amount, just over 391,000 are county claims. And over 687,000 goes to the state of South Dakota. Most of that is motor vehicle collections. You've got the claims in front of you. You can see there were numerous jury claims this month totaling $10,000. Other than that, I didn't see anything out of the ordinary unless any of you have questions on anything. I don't think we've got that.
I had it on my.
Oh, it was, yeah, we got it sent down the machine. Yep, yep, yep. Sorry. But anyway, any other comments, questions?
Those are approved.
Motion by Johnson.
Okay.
Second by Gable. Any other comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Item number 16, action to approve automatic budget supplement.
Nothing today.
Okay. Personnel changes.
One personnel change, and that is Deputy Maintenance Supervisor Justin Allergan. Do a step increase of the depth 10, 2399 per hour effective May 1st.
Make a motion.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any comments, questions, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that motion carries. Action to approve travel request. We have several of those.
The first one for myself, the treasurer, the deputy treasurer and the register of deeds to attend the 2021 South Dakota Association of County Officials Spring Workshop and then the Director of Equalization and Appraisal Staff to attend the South Dakota Assessing Officers Association, their conference. And the last two are for the facilities manager to attend the South Dakota Weed Commission Meeting and the Bande's 2021 Spring Mosquito Workshop.
The question that I had is, the spring workshop, wasn't that what we just had?
There's a separate.
Ours is separate.
Well, you.
They had a new officials workshop.
Yeah.
That I went to assist with. And that's what I went to. Yeah. Yep. That was for just new officials.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Any other comments, questions?
Why don't they have them together as they used to have? Is there any particular?
They've never had them together. The spring one's always been separate. It's the fall convention that we all meet together.
Okay.
Yeah. So at the, at the same time, we were meeting with new officials, the county commissioners were holding their spring workshop.
Yeah.
At the same time, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose that motion carries. Public notices, possible form of commissioners, could be attendance. We do have a Sioux Valley Commissioner District meeting. Possibly it's not set in stone yet for May 12th. That's still a work in progress, waiting to hear back from other counties. I don't know what you're, you, if you would be able to attend, I guess, just to get an idea from our county. You'd be in attendance? All right. Anything else that anyone can think of? Quorum?
The government affairs tomorrow. That's, that's a thing. Lincoln Day dinner.
That is.
What is that? Twenty, yeah, 29th, I would say.
Yeah, 29th of April, right? That will be Lincoln Day dinner.
Government affairs tomorrow. Government Affairs is tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
The Lincoln Day Dinner, do you have any more details on the time and place for that?
Yeah.
30.
All right.
All right. See, anything else on my planner that we could have a quorum of commissioners at? So, all right, we'll move on then to all business. Is there any old business?
Nope.
Just coming back to the meeting that Sarah was, Sarah Pauls was talking about. So Brenda and Meyer and I attended. That was just really exciting to see that. P D, they're, they're meeting room for that, too.
Yeah, it's going to be very well organized once we get this going. And I'm looking forward to that cooperation amongst the agencies. All right, item number 21, any new business? How about for the open? I don't think we had anybody call in. Do we have a need for an executive session? Anybody? All right, I'd love for a motion to adjourn.
Somewhere.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. See you back here at 1:00. And tonight, one of you steps aside, is that right? So did you guys decide how that's going?